Welcome everyone, staff and councillors. And this is the agenda of the ordinary meeting of Denport City Council and it's been livestreamed and it's Monday 25th of May at 5pm. Council acknowledges and pays respects to the Tasmanian Aboriginal community as the traditional and original owners and continuing custodians of this land on which we mate. All persons in attendance are advised that it's council policy to record council meetings in accordance with council's digital recording policy. The recording of this meeting will be made available to the public on council's website for a minimum period of six months. This council meeting will be livestreamed to the Denport City Council's YouTube channel and can also be accessed on YouTube later. Item 1.0 is apologies. We don't have any official apologies as yet. I understand councillor Ennis has not yet joined the meeting. I'm sure he'll be with us shortly. Item 2.0 is declarations of interest. Are there any declarations of interest in any item on this agenda? I have an item declaring an interest in item 4.1, which is the planning authority matter. Are there any other items of declarations of interest?
Yeah, Mayor, councillor Perry, I'll declare an interest in the agenda item 5.5.
Thank you councillor Perry. Are there any other items of the interest declared? No? Item 3.0 is procedural matters 3.1.1, council meeting of the 27th of April. Do I have a mover of those minutes?
So moved councillor Perry.
Councillor Laycock happy to second that.
Councillor Laycock, any comments, questions?
No comments, Mayor.
Councillor Laycock?
Nothing to add.
No other comments? Councillor Perry to close?
Consider it closed.
All those in favour, please say aye.
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 Are there any against? Motion's carried unanimously. Item 3.2.1 is public question time. And item 3.2.1, responses to questions raised at prior meetings. There were no questions that needed to have responses after that meeting. So there's nothing there. Item 3.2.2 are questions on notice from the public. And I would ask for a mover of the motion for those, please. Let council accept, endorse those comments.
So moved.
Councillor Hollister? Do I have a second, please?
Councillor Laycock?
Thank you. Any comments councillor Hollister?
Nothing further to add.
Anything to add councillor Laycock?
Nothing further, thank you.
Any other comments, questions?
Yes, Mayor, you do.
Councillor Murphy?
Mayor, this relates to the response to question three on page six of item 3.2.2. Question three, the question B. I would be of the opinion that that question has been answered incorrectly. Having in light of read all the information in relation to those particular matters, I believe that the response is incorrect and the response should be yes.
Thank you councillor Murphy. Any other comments? Councillor Hollister to close?
Consider it closed.
I'll put the motion, all those in favour, please say aye.
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 Are there any against?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, I'm against as well.
Okay, I'll ask for those in favour.
Point of order, Mayor. I just need to make the point clear to the councillors that the information that is going out is on behalf of us. It may be provided by the council offices, but at the end of the day, as councillors, we endorse the responses that go to those members of the public who have written to us. And we need to think very carefully as to whether we support the information being accurate or inaccurate. So I would advise the councillors to actually double check in relation to that particular, if they're happy with that particular response to that particular question.
Thank you councillor Murphy, that is what I've asked, that you endorse those responses. Item 3.2, there were questions on notice and the recommendation has been moved and seconded. Councillor Hollister, did you want to add anything to close the debate? Beg your pardon, I've already done that. I will ask for those in favour and I'll go around the room as in I'm looking at. So I will, councillor Alexio.
Against?
Against. Councillor Jarman?
Against.
Councillor, where am I at now? Councillor Murphy?
Against.
Councillor Laycock?
For.
Thank you councillor Milburn?
For.
Excuse me, Mayor?
Yes.
It's councillor Ennis, I'll just let you know that I'm here.
Thank you councillor Ennis, we're voting on item 3.2, the recommendation to accept the responses to the questions on notice.
Point of order there, Mayor.
Councillor Murphy?
Point of order, Mayor, should he also hear in relation to the response or the question was put in relation to those responses? Has not already heard it before he votes?
I would ask councillor Ennis to perhaps abstain from this question from responding. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sorry.
Councillor Hollister's for.
Councillor Hollister, councillor Rockford for. Councillor Perry?
I'm against as well on that point.
So it's four, it's four alls, so the motion is lost. Is that correct councillor? Mr General Manager?
That's correct, Mayor, yes.
Thank you.
Can I suggest, Mayor, maybe a follow-up motion to at least answer the questions that councillors are comfortable with?
Thank you. Deleting the answer to question. Councillor Murphy, would you like to move an amended motion then? A follow-up motion? Responding to that? Yes, please.
Happy to move that.
Responding to all except question two?
3B. Question 3B?
Thank you. Councillor Murphy has moved. Jackie, have you got that?
So the motion is all questions and responses be accepted apart from 3B?
Correct.
Yes, I've got that, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you councillor Murphy, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
I'll second.
Councillor Perry, I heard. Did you want to add anything else councillor Murphy?
Nothing further there, I think we've discussed it enough.
Thank you councillor Perry.
Yeah, I just had, I don't think the response is a flat-out yes, but I think we perhaps could have answered that in a little more detail, but you know, I'm waving between no and yes, but certainly I don't think no is quite adequate on that occasion. So that's all I could add.
Thank you, any other comments? Councillor Murphy, happy to close the debate?
Consider it closed, Mayor.
Thank you, I'll put the motion, all those in favour, please say aye.
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 Are there any against? The motion's carried unanimously, thank you. Item 3.2.3 are questions without notice from the public and we do have some for me to read. From Christopher Mills at 52 Caroline Street, East Denport. Question one, the general manager this week cited a letter dated the 28th of August 2017 to confirm that 54 Caroline Street is a landslide zone. Would the general manager please use the same citation to confirm that, quote, "The removal of the trees may cause some destabilisation of the land" that is in the status? And question two from the same source, the general manager has also stated that the land at 54 Caroline Street is a reserve. However, it doesn't appear to be included in the DCC Public Land Register as a reserve. Could council clarify the ownership of this land? I'll pass through to the general manager to respond to that, please.
Yes, through you, Mayor. I think we've previously provided this response to Mr Mills, but the title for the land in question remains in the name of the original developer. The transfer to council never formally occurred, therefore the land isn't actually listed on council's public land register. Council is maintaining the land as a public reserve as per the intent of the subdivision and it's noted on the title as a reserve. And look, in regard to the landslip status, there's really nothing further we can add. It has that status as a low-level landslide area. We're aware of that classification. There's a number of trees on the reserve that were nearing the end of their life and the decision was made back in November to remove those trees. That's occurred. The trunks were left in the ground to avoid unnecessary destabilisation and replanting of the area is occurring, so.
Thank you, Mr Atkins. Question from Bob Bellicott, Levencoker Place, Denport. Subject Covid-19 crisis, possible reductions in remuneration, proposed assistance to rate payers and rent relief for Providore Place tenants. Question one, Mayor and councillors, taking into consideration that we have been continually encouraged to make some forms of sacrifice during the Covid-19 pandemic. A, did this, did those on the council's Covid-19 response committee give consideration to recommend that councillors and senior staff take a pay cut similar to that which the CEO of Quirro Coast Authority, Mr Daryl Connolly, announced as per the advocate on the 18th of May, i.e. 10% to 20%? And B, if not, was it because of, in some instances, due to government employment regulations, the reduction in pay is not permitted? And if that is so, would council consider donating to the Mayor's charitable trust amounts as per the above example? Question two, Mayor, please inform who on council will be assessing the necessary very personal financial affairs of those who will be in the unfortunate situation of seeking more assistance other than the deferments recently announced in regard to rate payments and other council costs? Question three, as they're all connected, I'll also include this question. Other than a significant amount of $40,000 council will waive for food business licence fees, what is the estimated loss of revenue due to assistance that will be given to the tenants in Providore Place?
Yeah, through you, Madam Mayor. Because council have an enterprise agreement in place which is ratified through the Fair Work Commission. Under law, councils are required to pay employees in courts with this agreement. Council allowances are set by the Tasmanian Industrial Commission, which sits within the Department of Justice with the state government. Decision on whether to receive the allowance is a matter for the individual. Hardship, council has adopted a policy to support the community. Given the significant value of the support required, this is a more appropriate approach than the Mayor's charitable trust fund. Those applications for hardship assistance will be assessed by. Decisions being referred to full council. And in regard to rent relief for commercial tenants in Providore Place and also for any council facilities, we're negotiating suitable relief depending on their circumstances and as required under the federal government's code of conduct for landlord-tenant relationships during the pandemic.
Thank you, Mr Atkins. I have a question from Jenny Clare at 57 Guns Street, Denport. Question one, what is the total expenditure council has incurred and estimates will be incurred, estimates will be incurred in response to the Covid-19 crisis? Question two, has the council's ability to respond been hampered by the current debt of approximately $53 million? And question three, how does the DCC's Covid-19 response compare with that of the other councils in Tasmania? Again, I'll hand over to the general manager.
Yeah, thanks Mayor, through you. I guess as that question, the impact of Covid-19 on the Denport City Council is significant and will be significant. Being an urban council, you know, we rely heavily on the commercial and retail sectors and those sectors have been the hardest hit by the pandemic. Denport typically generates a high percentage of its own revenue and is not dependent on government operating grants. Revenue streams like parking, fees, regional facility, hire facilities, Taswater dividends have all been significantly impacted and will affect council's bottom line. The current forecast at this stage is a deficit of in the order of one and a half million for the 1920 financial year. In regard to the debt, council, all the cost of finance is really only a small part of council's total expenditures. I think the answer is no, it hasn't impacted on council's response and still in a position to pay the interest and principal of our loan borrowings. And the last part of the question about support for the community, I guess the research shows that local government has limited capacity in stimulating the local economy in comparison to state and federal governments due to our size. But one of the best approaches is to bring forward capital expenditure and the government is encouraging councils to do that. I think Denport council is fortunate that the Living City Waterfront precinct is ramping up and you know, with the hotel and the council-funded park totaling $57 million in construction activity, there's going to be a significant benefit for the local economy as we recover from the pandemic. The research shows that every dollar spent in construction flows back through the local economy two and a half times, so the timing couldn't be better in that regard and council is committed to funding that activity and supporting the local economy in that way. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Atkins. Question from Douglas Jenny at 23 Watkins Street, Denport. Question one, when is the council going to maintain the fascia on the old library building as it is looking very shabby? And question two refers to capital expenditure, page 260 on tonight's agenda, that capital expenditure is at 37.8 of the total budget available and with only two months left to the end of the financial year. While some monies will be carried over, this is still a dismal performance and the question is why has there been such an under expenditure? Again, Mr Atkins.
Yeah, thanks Mayor. Look, council doesn't currently have any plans for any major maintenance or improvements of the facade or of the old library building. In regard to the capital expenditure, yeah, the report in the agenda is as of the end of April. There's still quite a few capital projects that are currently underway and that will be completed by the end of June, by the end of the financial year. However, it's fair to say the bulk of the unspent money from this year's capital programme relates to the Living City Waterfront project, which will continue over certainly through most or all of next financial year.
Thank you. And final questions are from Malcolm Galloway at 4 Bar Mott Drive, Mindeta. Question one, in response to my question relating to Providore Place in the current agenda, is it true that council's insistence to recover, recoup the debt directly relates to an unenforceable head lease agreement? Council responded no accordingly, despite warnings from concerned rate payers at the time was the $194,147 loss of rent due to council's failure to conduct proper due diligence as to the newly registered head leasing companies' ability to pay rent and/or council's failure to procure suitable securities to minimise any potential losses. Question two, if the write-off of the $194,147 of unpaid rent under the initial head lease agreement on Providore Place did not result from an unenforceable lease agreement, failure to properly assess the newly registered company's ability to pay the agreed rent and/or failure to procure adequate securities to minimise any potential losses, then why did council write off the total debt? And question three, with council acknowledging that at the 2019/20 financial year budget time it considered in relation to the $194,147 rent owing from Providore Place, that council decided not to make an allowance for income which potentially may not have been right, while at the same time a rate increase was necessary. Accordingly, will council acknowledge that the rate increase was in fact necessary to protect the bottom line and once again turn to the rate payers to foot the cost of Providore Place losses as well as services? Given the reaction from fellow councillors to this response earlier, I will take that on notice, thank you. Okay. Item 3.3, questions on notice from councillors, there are none at the time of the agenda and are none now. Item 4.0, planning authority matters. I will announce that council intends to act as a planning authority under the Land Use Planning and Approvals Act of 1993 for the consideration of the agenda item 4.1. Council is required by Regulation 8.3 of the Local Government Meeting Procedures Regulations 2015 to deal with items as a planning authority under the Looper 1993 in a sequential manner. Following item is to be dealt with at this meeting of council in its capacity as a planning authority. Item 4.1, PA 2020.051, residential multiple dwellings times two at 37 Leary Avenue, Stony Rise. And I will close out the meeting now, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Just let me push the button.
So we've got the Mayor leaving the meeting at the moment and councillor Ennis has sent me a message asking if he could also declare an interest in this item, so he's going to now, I'm assuming, leave the meeting as well? Goodbye.
Leaving now.
Tom will call you back councillor Ennis. Thank you. So item 4.1, residential, the multiple dwellings part two, 37 Leary Avenue, Stony Rise is what we're discussing now. So could I have a mover on that motion currently, please?
Chair, it's councillor Perry speaking.
It's councillor Perry?
I'd like to move an alternate motion which has been distributed, or the reasons for that have been distributed to fellow councillors this afternoon. Now, I understand Jackie has a copy of that amended motion, so if she would, if she'd be able to put that up on the screen?
It's up on the screen now councillor Perry, thank you. So you're moving that motion, the new motion?
Moving, I'm moving that motion that's on the screen as we speak, yes.
Thank you, could I have a second, please?
Councillor Murphy to second.
Thanks councillor Murphy. We've got that up there now. I'm assuming that everybody has had the chance to read this new alternate resolution from councillor Perry, so councillor Perry, if you'd like to speak to it, please.
Thanks, Madam Chair. When I read the agenda and had a look at this item, I thought, now this is a really good development. There are a couple of areas where it fell short and then when I got to the end of the end of the reading, I obviously detected, well not detected, read that the recommendation was for council to refuse, to refuse the application. So I went back through and I deduced that the two key areas or the two reasons for deduce or for refusing the application was frontage setback and also setback to the rear on the western side where we have storm water main. I thought that if we could potentially change those setbacks to fall within guidelines, then we could reconsider this. And pretty much in every other area, it met the performance criteria that it needed to. And another one was the 1.7, where I'm just reading off my notes here, it was the provision of 1.7 metre high screen along the side decks facing each other at the middle level of the dwelling, which the new recommendation or the alternate recommendation has included. So there's the recommendation in front of you all. I think that now puts this application into, yes, we can consider approving this. And I'll be interested to see what others have to say about it. Thanks, Mayor.
Thanks councillor Perry. Councillor Murphy, if you'd like to speak to the motion, the new motion?
Thank you Chair. Yeah, I agree with councillor Perry and this one obviously quite a tricky one, taking into consideration that past history in this particular area. I think the recommendations that councillor Perry has made in this motion are sensible. More importantly, the onus is then put back on to the developer as to whether he wishes to comply, so it's not a green light for the development to go ahead. It's a requirement for him to adhere to the planning scheme in relation to the easement, the setbacks, the variation of setbacks from the front and the provision of the privacy screens. I think that, you know, obviously that potentially has the, an impact for them to change the development. So it will be interesting to see, as I said, I think these are sensible and it sort of brings us in line with the Act. So I don't have any issue with those and wholeheartedly support them.
Thanks councillor Murphy. Now, I do notice that councillor Milburn at the moment has put her hand up via online, so I'd let her speak next if I may.
Thank you Deputy Mayor. Look, I do have to apologise, I hadn't had a chance to check my emails before the meeting.
Understand.
So I do apologise for that. I'm not quite sure whether the extra, extra motion is required because I would have thought that's what the initial recommendation to not let it go forward as it was is saying anyway. Anyhow, I do have a question. If you can indulge me, it's associated with one of the questions or one of the things raised in the notes about people buying in that area on the subdivision under the assumption that units were not permitted and there were strict building rules in place. Now, obviously we're under the Planning Act and the zoning and things have been changed, but in the initial subdivision, was having no units one of the criteria and then that's changed? Or were people a little bit duped when they bought into the area? Or is it all just hearsay?
I do know councillor Milburn that it was answered in the original motion, the planning authority motion by council, that that was not the case. However, there may be someone, do we have Carolyn Mills here or Shane Warren with us?
Yes, Carolyn here.
Thanks Carolyn, if you would mind answering councillor Milburn's query, please?
To my knowledge, there hasn't been a restriction on building units in the area, but sometimes real estate agents, well not real estate agents, contracts of sale don't, specify things like that. I've seen before where a contract of sale has said that there can't be any units built. So perhaps it was that type of situation, I don't know. There's nothing in the covenants and the planning scheme, neither the current one nor the previous one suggested units couldn't be built.
And I suppose the point too Carolyn would be that there are other villas being built up there?
Yes, absolutely.
Absolutely. Just to answer your questions councillor Milburn?
That does, thank you very much. It's the third time it's come up in my time as councillor, so you know, it might be something we need to get out there to make it known that, you know, it is in the Planning Act and this will happen. There's only a few blocks left. Hopefully they'll go through without too much problems, thank you.
Thank you. Was there anybody else that would like to speak on this at the moment?
Oldman Hollister?
If I may? Oh, sorry.
Councillor Hollister, I'll go, you'll go first and councillor Murphy, then we'll ask you to speak again. Councillor Hollister?
Yes, I'd just like to congratulate Leon and the staff for formulating this so that it can be fixed tonight. I think it's a good way to do this. If something comes up that needs to change, it's a good idea, it can be done in the afternoon and an email so that everybody's aware of what's going on. and an email so that everybody's aware of what's going on. So I just think it's, it's been useful and provided they can comply with the conditions, it should be all right. Nothing further.
Thank you. Councillor Murphy, did you have a question?
I just wanted to clarify something for councillor Milburn in relation to her query. I'm not too sure whether she's aware, but the block next door to the west currently holds two units on it. And it is pretty much industry standard in relation to subdivision development that if a developer chooses, they will put in the necessary caveats to determine what type of building, if any, height restrictions, building size, building types and everything else is usually done in the development stage. So any purchases of the land are made fully aware if that particular subdivision or development does have any caveats in relation to building restrictions prior to purchase. So it's buyer beware.
Thank you councillor Murphy. Was there any further speakers on this motion, the second motion that's been put forward by councillor Perry?
A question from councillor Hollister?
Yes, councillor Hollister.
A question to probably planning people. I believe in the past, there's been covenants put on like this in the past about no units and things like that. And I believe that when it comes to a court of law, they don't stand up. I may be wrong. Somebody can probably inform me. Thank you.
Yes, Carolyn here. There have been some situations where covenants saying there are no units to be built have been placed on a property. Council doesn't have any jurisdiction over that, though. That needs to go to court if somebody wants to dispute that.
And I, and I believe in the past that, you know, it hasn't stood up in court. So I don't know how that works.
Yes, I'm not sure about that, but.
Thank you, both of you. Anybody further that would like to speak?
Yes, W.
I'm sorry.
Alexia.
Oh, councillor Alexia, sorry.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I just want to, okay, some of the thoughts that councillor Perry made there. Look, there was, when I, when I first read through it, I could see that there was quite a few issues with this application. But the amendments that's been made, yeah, I'd like to commend councillor Perry for making those amendments and it's going to put us in line with all the planning authority requirements that we need. Thank you.
Thanks councillor Alexia. If there's no one further wanting to speak at the moment? I do have one question, if I may, through to you Carolyn, if I may. Obviously, originally, there were issues and the council gave the applicant, as in 60 degrees, every opportunity to go back and make some changes. So is this quite a normal procedure where you've given them the option to make the changes? They didn't. They wanted you to take the proposal as is. But now they've changed their mind after what, seeing the report has come out that was recommended not to go ahead?
I believe that it was actually the developer that has approached council, not 60 degrees as the applicant.
Right.
So I'm not sure what happened in that situation.
All right.
But yes, we will often ask people to change things so that it complies with the planning scheme.
Yeah. I think you gave them every opportunity. So thank you. I appreciate that. And yes, it's commended to councillor Perry getting this all sorted since we only got the report on Thursday morning. So there's been a lot of work put on behind the scenes and it's much appreciated. Councillor Perry, if you'd like to close the motion?
Thanks, Madam Chair. Yeah, look, I do want to commend council. I think the original decision, the refusal, was the correct one, based on the information in front of them and based on the application presented. And I'll also note that prior to acceptance of the application, the number of discretion were raised and the applicant declined to assist, to, to, to come back with, with, with some renovations, if you like, and some revisions to try and make the application fit. But it only came down to that, to when the developer spoke to, spoke to the applicant or the designer and realised that, you know, there are some issues there that could be fixed, but they needed to be fixed before we could approve it. And that's, that's how, that's how it works and that's how it's worked on this occasion. Thank you all for your comments. I think it's, it's, it's going to be a great, it's going to be a great development. And now that we've got it within planning, within our planning requirements, I think we can move on comfortably and, and approve it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So I would like to ask all those in favour, say aye.
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 Any against? That would be considered the motion carried unanimously. Thank you very much. So what we would do now is moving on to section five, we will ask for the mayor and councillor Ennis to be brought back into the meeting. Thank you.
They're on their way back in.
Thank you very much, Mr Griffiths. I'm sure someone can sing a song while we're waiting. No takers? That's a shame. I can see the mayor there, but we can't hear you, Mayor.
Sorry, just moving my screen back so I can see my.
Welcome back. And councillor Ennis? Just wondering on councillor Ennis, Mayor, but I'll hand that back over to you. Thank you.
I'll go this way. Okay, thank you. We're still waiting on councillor Ennis?
We are, yes, Mayor.
Thank you. Back in now.
We're all back in the room? Fabulous. Thank you, everyone. Moving on to item 5.1 is the Stormwater Asset Management Plan. Do I have a mover of the recommendation on page 78, please?
So moved, councillor Milburn.
What's that? Councillor Milburn and councillor Lakecock?
Yep.
Thank you. Councillor Milburn?
It's all there and nothing more further to say. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Lakecock?
Nothing to add.
Any comments, questions? Councillor Milburn to close.
Consider it closed.
Thank you. I'll put the motion. All ayes in favour, please say aye.
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 Are there any against? The motion's carried unanimously. Item 5.2 is the bikes riding strategy for 2015 to 20, a report against the action list. Do I have a mover, please?
I'm happy to move. Councillor Jarman?
Thank you. Do I have a second, though?
Second, councillor Ennis.
Thank you, councillor Ennis. Councillor Jarman, any comments?
Look, I just have one question and it's been raised to me by people aware that we're getting better and better all the time with different bike trails are starting up. We've got the coastal pathway being discussed and this bike riding strategy has been something that we've been working on since, as you can see, since 2015. They want to know why, and I'm not sure who we put this through, Madam Chair, but perhaps through to Matthew. Is, they find it a bit abhorrent that all these new pathways and different cycleways that we're doing, we tend to make this pathway cement and they're actually not very nice to ride on. So with this strategy, do we aim to be on the roads as much as we, as possible, Matthew? Or, I'm not sure who might answer me through this if I could.
Well, I'll hand over to the general manager in the first instance.
Thank you.
Yeah, through you, Mayor. It's an interesting question. I guess from a life cycle point of view, concrete certainly lasts a lot longer and that's probably why we favour that type of material. But yeah, certainly, yeah, the asphalt does provide a softer surface.
It has been asked from bike riders. Yourself being a bike rider, I'm sure you'd understand what they're getting at. Going over concrete and concrete is in sections, it's actually not a pleasant ride. I mean, it's different for people that are running and different for people walking. But when it comes to actual bike riding, it's a lot more pleasant to be on asphalt more than often. So do we, do we aim to be on roads more often by putting a line and if the roads are wide enough? Or do we just look at footpaths first? That's, I guess that's the question they're asking me to ask you.
Yeah, I guess through you, Mayor. I guess it depends a bit on the situation and where it is. So the, the concrete path that I can think of is, is a long formy road, which is partly cantilevered out towards the rail line. And I think concrete was the most suitable material to use there. If you look around the Victoria Parade, we do that in, in asphalt. It's, it's a lot smoother for cyclists and a lot easier for the runners on, on people's joints. So I think it depends a bit on the situation, what the most suitable material is. I think, you know, as a whole, I think we'd probably have more hot mixed paths than what we would concrete. As for using, as for separating the paths from the road, that's certainly our preference wherever possible to provide that separation because it's a much safer experience for the users.
Lovely. Thank you. Appreciate that.
Thank you. Councillor Ennis is the second, though.
Thank you, Mayor. I just had a question up. I'm really pleased that, comment first, I'm really pleased that this initiative's going ahead, particularly, you know, the opportunity for people to use bike riding. And we would have all noticed how much, since this COVID-19, how many more people are using our pathways. So it's fantastic. Let's hope it sticks a bit for people's health. That would be fantastic. And the second, second thing that I would say is a question, down near Aiken Head Point, I noticed that is signage going to be included down there where you come off the main pathway across to the Bass Strait Maritime Centre? You know where the seat is currently there and that seat's going to be removed. Is there going to be signage there talking about the Bass Strait Maritime Centre? You know, with a little bit of information there to allow people who are maybe tourists walking along the main path to understand that, oh, that is the actual Bass Strait Maritime Centre over there and this is why I need to go over there? But yeah, that's the question. Is there going to be signage? If you look at, if you look at the, at the map there, somewhere right near number five or number four there.
Thank you councillor Ennis. I can see Mr Skirving, perhaps looks like he might want to answer that question.
Yes, thanks Mayor, through you. Certainly, if there's not planned to be a relocation of the current signage directing people towards the Bass Strait Maritime Centre, we will relocate it to that, that point. There's a preference to get, I guess, all traffic coming across the coastal pathway link to cross Victoria Parade and Bluff Road at that point. It is a safer point for the crossing there. So we'll be prioritising access to the Maritime Centre from that location. So we'll certainly include one of the wayfinding totems at that location.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr Skirving. Are there any comments, questions from any other councillors? Councillor Alexia?
Thanks, Madam Chair. I'm just going to put a couple of opinions out there, just on my side of things, the way I see things there. I think it is a great idea that the cycling path is going ahead and it's going full steam ahead as well. My concerns are probably, in East Everton in Wright Street, there is a cycle path leading down a very busy truck route, which I see quite dangerous and probably unsafe. And hopefully, the strategy might just change a little bit as the new spirits come through and maybe that might change. The cycling path is also used for running and walking as well. So I did, I did notice that councillor Jarman raised an issue there of the surface, but I think you've got to keep everybody happy here that people use it for various reasons as well. Just my opinion, wanted to add it through. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Alexia. And I know you have raised that Wright Street cycle path before. Mr Skirving, did you have anything to add on?
I guess just that, again through you, Mayor, coming back to council in the future, obviously, this strategy document's coming to an end. We've still got significant works to deliver in terms of the coastal pathway and I guess also other potential projects linked to that in terms of some suburban links to the coastal pathway. But I would expect to see that, I guess, as we develop our strategy in this space, you may see a shift in the branding of this type of work more away from just a bicycle strategy to more an active transport strategy, recognising that these links can be used by all sorts of other recreational and, and different user groups as well.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? I will ask councillor Jarman to close the debate.
Thank you. Look, no, it's good that we're having an open discussion about this. And going forward, I'm sure that we're going to be improving on this strategy as we go through. Thank you.
Thank you. I will put the motion. All ayes in favour, please say aye.
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 Are there any, are there any against? The motion's carried unanimously. Thank you. Item 5.3 is a report on the waste strategy for 2018 to 2023. Do I have a mover of the recommendation, please?
Happy to move that councillor Jarman here.
Thank you councillor Jarman. Alexia, thank you. Councillor Jarman?
Yes, obviously, I'm very interested in how we're going forward, discussing waste at all times. I suppose a couple of things I wanted to bring up, if I may, through you, is are we going to ensure, this is to the general manager, if I may, we're going to ensure that our fact sheets go out with the rates for the next financial year, please, Mr General Manager? It was quite well received, I do believe, last time. Are we able to have that again? Encouraging and trying to get people to understand their recycling?
Yes, through you, Mayor, yes.
Oh, excellent. Oh, good. I'm really pleased to hear that. Thank you. And I'm just wondering whether we get to that point where we need to really write a letter to the state government and talk about a deposit scheme. It's been talked about on a regular basis. I don't know whether it can be led from a council point of view. I know it's a state government decision, but whether or not we could, you know, encourage and maybe speak at it at this level, maybe we take it to the Quatercoast Authority, I don't know. What are your thoughts, Matthew?
Through you, Mayor. At least, it's a, it's an interesting topic, that one. We do have a resolution that council made just before the COVID pandemic that we have a workshop to look at banning single-use plastics in the city. That's still on our list of workshops to reschedule once we get back together. So potentially, we could talk about the container deposit system at the same workshop.
Well, that would be great. I mean, that's my notice, a motion about the, the single-use plastics. So that's great. That would good. And I suppose then we also would need to perhaps include at that workshop, it could be a large workshop and we talk about Fogo again, seriously. I understand why it was knocked back last time. It was just too expensive per household. But perhaps that's something that we could bring to a workshop as well. So maybe we just make it a whole waste strategy workshop. Mr General Manager, that would be great. I did notice, and I'm really pleased to see, that apparently Dalgerton are encouraging us to have recycling bin toppers on page 123, I believe. I haven't heard of them before, so I didn't really know. Was it 23? 123? Down the bottom, 1.5, work with event organisers, improving waste management of public events. So could you just explain to me how the bin toppers work? Or do we, will we get a photo about them or some kind of explanation about how they work? Mr Skirving's nodding.
Yes, so I can certainly provide some additional information there through you, Mayor. So maybe if any councillors have attended, say, for example, the Harvest Market in Launceston or some other events where the waste disposal bins do have temporary signage included in them, which gives a more, a fuller explanation about what different types of waste streams can be deposited in which bins.
Excellent.
More generally, there, I guess there are other more permanent versions where there's just more visual cues in terms of public, um, recycling or waste bins in terms of coloured toppers for, for the bins. So the surrounds may have a consistent, um, colouring, but recycling, the, uh, deposit point in the bin is coloured differently depending on whether it's a waste stream or a recycling stream. But certainly the, um, and you often see them in office environments now as well, where there's a, a more fulsome explanation of what, what waste types can be deposited in certain bins.
Excellent. Well, going forward, the more we can do, the, the better it is. So I was really pleased hearing about that. And my last thing, sorry, Mayor, um, perhaps also, um, Mr. General Manager, when we talk about doing our waste workshop, um, item 3.1 on page 125 is about reducing litter and illegal dumping. One of my biggest hates is, um, people going up into Durkins Road and dumping rubbish and going anywhere they like and dumping rubbish. Perhaps we could start a dobbin' a dumper so people could tell us and take photos and take photos of their cars and, and then they know that people are going to be watching them. And, um, maybe it's going to be up to the community out there at large to be able to tell us what's going on and be able to feel free to let us know. Um, so maybe we can talk that at a workshop level anyway. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Jarman. Um, just a further comment on, on the workshop. I, I know that, um, Legat at a statewide level are involved in, um, preparing and planning for the, uh, the, um, next lot of waste management and have been doing a lot of work on that. So perhaps we could invite, um, Dale Lester, um, from Legat to join us either electronically or however, for that workshop around, um, where the national, where the statewide situation sits as well.
That would be awesome. Wonderful.
Thank you. councillor Alexio is the second, though.
Yes. Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, I was gonna raise a sense of an issue regarding the alleged dumping, which is, I noticed in the report that it's gone down quite a fair bit from, uh, the previous year. So it's good that there's less dumping happening, but yeah, we need to keep an eye on that. Um, and happy to go to a workshop. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments, questions?
Alderman Hollister.
Alderman Hollister.
councillor.
councillor Hollister even.
With, um, you've only got to walk through the mall and Southern Brook Street and the amount of chewing gum that's just spat on the footpath is disgusting. I don't know. If we can't ban chewing gum, we ought to at least have our responsible people enforce some fines because it's quite disgusting. If we get a nice new footpath and then people just go and make a mess of them. So something needs to be done. Whether it's enforcing the liquor, the litter, I was saying liquor, litter act, you know, so that something can be done about it because it's, you know, we spent a lot of money on steam cleaning the footpaths and that, and then people just come along and just waste it. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Hollister. Does anyone else have any comments?
Hello? councillor Ennis?
councillor Ennis.
It would be awesome. I, I've heard him speak and, uh, he'll be, he'll be very, a very good person to have at that workshop.
Thank you. Any other comments? councillor Jarman to close the debate. Thank you.
Consider it closed. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll put the motion. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any against? The motion's carried unanimously. Item 5.4 is a tender report for, uh, replacing ground lighting at Maidstone Park. Do I have a mover of the recommendation, please?
You do, Mayor. councillor Laycock.
Thank you. I'm the second, uh.
I'll second it. councillor Alexio.
Thank you. Um, I've, I've got councillor Alexio. Thank you. councillor Laycock.
Thank you, Meg. I'm sorry, Abai, can you hear me?
Yes, yes, thank you.
Um, yes, I'm happy to move this, the Devonport Electrical Services get the tender for replacing the lights at Maidstone, uh, Park. They're well overdue. And as it says in our discussion notes, the lightings and, uh, the lights, current lights are not meeting current standards. So this is well overdue. Thank you.
Thank you. councillor Alexio.
Uh, no, no more further comments, there, dear.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions?
Just a question, if I may.
councillor Jarman.
Thank you. Um, through you to Matthew, probably. Um, we can never go down the solar area with all these, this, this lighting. They're too, they're too, um, technical for solar.
Uh, Mr. General Manager.
Yeah, I think the, um, yeah, the, the strength or the, the lux levels required for sport activity would probably be outside what, um, you could get through a solar powered lighting system.
No problem. Thank you.
Are there any other questions, comments?
Uh, yes.
councillor Ennis.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, just, uh, a cou- a couple of, of one comment. Um, I would think that, um, in the, uh, in the report, it says community engagement. Uh, they're worried about potential, uh, light spill. Uh, I don't think, uh, there'd be too much light spill by 7:30 at night. Uh, that's when I generally think the lights would go off from Maidstone Park. Um, I couldn't see, uh, Spraiton Footy Club training much later than, than, uh, 7:30. And so I don't think that would be a concern. Uh, but one of the, the other things that I, that I noticed that says in the report that, um, total forecast cost is a hundred and one thousand approximately over the current budget allocation. And it's going to be accommodated by savings from other public open space projects. Um, is, have, have they been identified as yet?
I'll go to the general manager, please.
Yeah, I might, Mayor, I might just pass to Mr. Skirving on that. There is a number of, um, parks and reserves jobs that are under budget and I just can't specifically remember which ones.
Thank you. Mr. Skirving.
Um, I guess the, the overall programme is, um, under budget significantly and the savings that have been identified are from projects that have been completed. And generally, they are projects that have been completed, um, within their forecast allocation, but the project contingencies haven't been required. Um, so you'll see in this, in this project as well, there's a reasonably significant contingency which has been added to this pro- project. So this is just, particularly in this instance, because of the poor ground conditions, um, out at, out at this location, there is potential for us to strike other issues. So there's been quite a significant contingency added. Um, and generally, the savings that have been, um, made across the programme year on year are derived from those contingencies. It's not common that project scope would be reduced. Um, generally, projects are delivered within the original scope, but it's the contingency allocations which we are able to, um, aggregate across the course of the programme and then re-portion to, to projects that may need it elsewhere in the programme.
Thank you, Matthew. Oh, yeah, I was just wondering what, what would be cut. Uh, thank you.
Thank you. Um, are there any other comments or questions?
councillor Perry.
councillor Perry.
Yeah, just further to what, um, Mr. Skirving said, um, the, the analysis of expenditures to another public open space projects has identified a likely saving of around 360,000 across the 1920 programme, um, for the reasons that obviously Mr. Skirving, um, put forward. Um, just one question. I noticed the, the grant, the grant that we got, the grant that we received, just going back to my notes, the, the Sports and Recreation Major, Major Grants Programme, we actually, we actually approved that in November 2017, which is like 30 months away. Are we, are we still within the, um, I know those things have a statutory, statutory timeline on them. Are we still within the scope on that, on that particular timeline? I'm, I'm sure we are, otherwise wouldn't we, we'd be talking about it. But just wanted to confirm that if we could.
Mr. Skirving?
Yeah.
Yes, we are. Uh, my understanding is that they've been kept informed of the process along the way and an extension has been granted on, uh, one extension has been granted on that, that allocation already.
Yeah. All right. Okay. Thank you. That's all. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? councillor Laycock to close the debate.
Consider it closed.
Thank you. I will put the motion. All those in favour, please say aye.
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 Are there any, are there any against? The motion's carried unanimously. Item 5.5, and I'll ask councillor Perry to lead the meeting.
Right. I'll hit the red button. Thank you.
Thank you.
Point of, point of order there, Mayor, if I may.
Yes.
Just in relation to the voting process, is it possible for the meeting convener to unmute all of the participants at once to, instead of us all having to reach for the mute button at the same, you know, at the same time?
Um, I don't know the answer to that question. Mr. Griffiths, you might have that response.
Um, I believe through you, Mayor, there's a, a mute all option, but, um, uncertain about the ability to unmute all.
Oh, come in. Okay, um, in that case, I'll take it, I'll take it under advisement with councillor Murphy and perhaps it's something we can, I can be sure about for next, for future meetings if we need to meet in this way. I don't, I don't want to mute somebody and then we can't, um, have a conversation, so.
Yeah, agree, Mayor, agree.
Thank you. Thank you for the comment. Um, where are we at?
5.5, I'm happy to move it, if you like, Mayor.
Uh, thank you councillor Jarman.
And councillor Murphy to second.
Thank you. Um, councillor Jarman is the mover.
Thank you. Um, this is great. This is, um, um, oh, what do they call it? I've got to find it.
Leveling.
Level the playing field, which is a great grant initiative and, um, wonderful that East Devonport have now taken it up. So it, um, only goes to show that, uh, it's something that's required and, uh, rather really pleased that they're going ahead with it. Thank you.
Thank you. councillor Murphy is the second.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, just to me, merely procedural, um, well done to the East Devonport Football Club and their committee in relation to pulling all this together and putting their application in to obtain the funding. Um, it's a good outcome for that particular precinct. Nothing further.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions?
Yes. councillor Ennis?
councillor Ennis.
Uh, I, from memory, I, I thought some time ago, three, uh, with this levelling the playing field support from the, uh, from the council, um, I sort of thought there was allocated, uh, three different clubs were allocated to $50,000 each. But I noticed that, um, in this, the council has changed it to 75,000. Um, is there an explanation for that?
I'm sure there is. I'll ask the general manager to clarify that, please.
Yes, through you, Mayor. Um, council allocated 150,000 in its 1920 budget for le- as contributions towards the level of playing field grants. I think back in April, May, when the budget was being prepared that year, there was a, a feeling that the junior soccer, the East Devonport Football Club and the East Devonport Football Club all may be seeking a contribution. And there was a, sort of on the basis of potentially 50K towards each. Um, but once the level of the playing field grants got finalised, they went through a two-round process. Um, it was clear that council didn't actually have to make a contribution to the junior soccer. Um, our support was only in kind. And at that point, we were of the view that 50K should support the East Devonport project and, and 50 should, um, cover the costs of the Devonport project. And that would have resulted in a $50,000 saving from our overall budget, I guess, if you like, for that programme. But, but like with any project, council, you know, carries the risk if there's overs or unders. And, and in this case, the East Devonport project's gone to, gone to the market and the, uh, the wash-up is there, that council's contribution is 75. But, um, that comes from within that budget of 150. So there's, um, still sufficient funds there. And, and if the Devonport one comes in at 50, we'll be 25 ahead of, um, there'll be a saving of 25 on the, on the, um, project, the overall project budget.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay, councillor Ennis?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Were there any other comments or questions? councillor Alexio.
Thanks, Madam Chair. Just a comment. Uh, I think it's going to be a great, a great asset for the Devonport City, uh, to have the East Devonport club rooms, uh, spruced up and fixed up. Um, it's, it's also, it's going to help East Devonport, obviously, but it's going to also help the whole of Devonport as well. So we've got more, more assets, the facility's going to be better and probably helping all the other sporting events that maybe that ground can be used for as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? councillor Jarman is the mover of the motion. I'll ask you to close, please.
Consider it closed. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll put the motion. All those in favour, please say aye.
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 Are there any against? The motion's carried unanimously. Thank you. I will ask Mr. Griffiths to bring Mr., uh, councillor Perry back into the meeting, please.
councillor Perry is back in the meeting.
Welcome back. Item 5.6 is the COVID-19 safety plan and recovery plan, um, for council. Um, the recommendation is on page 135. Do I have a mover, please?
They moved.
councillor Hollister.
I'm interested in that. councillor Laycock.
Thank you councillor Hollister. Did you have any comments?
No, this is to receive and note the report, so nothing further to add.
Thank you. councillor Laycock.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, as we'll have all read, the, uh, government have launched this, uh, workplace framework, uh, to protect our health and safety. And of course, in the notes, it also says that business, all our businesses are required to, to development, to develop and implement this plan. Uh, at the, at this, uh, time we're at at the moment, I think it's very important uh, that we do pass this tonight, which I'm sure we will, and we work to the framework that the government have, uh, put forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions?
If I may, Mayor.
councillor Jarman.
Um, yeah, yeah, it might be through to the general manager again or, or Mr. Griffiths, his, of the, uh, report. Um, look, just a congratulations to the staff on implementing this and getting it going. And what they've done has just been amazing because it's unprecedented. But, um, Matthew, do we have a clue when our office will be open to the public being able to come back in again? You know, there's these different stages, but it doesn't really mention us. I noticed that Kentish Council opened up. We don't have to copy any other councils. I know that. But, um, do we have a clue of when we're going to be back open for business to a certain extent?
Mr. General Manager?
Yeah, through you, Mayor. I guess we've got two points in our favour. One is that, um, Service Tasmania do the majority of our transactions. So they're now open and, and up and going again. And the second one is that we've been able to transition very smoothly to working from home and continuing to provide services to the community through that way and minimizing risk and, and without any interruption to the, to the delivery to the community. So I guess the advice from the government is, if possible, um, workplaces should continue to work from home until, um, stage three, which is the middle of July. We're, we're working through, um, planning for that now and then. It potentially could be some areas where it's, um, beneficial to bring employees back earlier.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? councillor Hollister is the mover of the motion. Would you close the debate, please?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Um, I think it's important that we realise that there are a lot of people that are vulnerable in our community. And I think this safety plan and recovery plan is very important. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll put the motion. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Are there any against? The motion's carried unanimously. Item 5.7 is the draft Devonport General Cemetery Master Plan for 2021 to 31. Do I have a mover of the recommendation, please?
councillor Milburn.
How does it sit? councillor Jarman.
councillor Milburn, councillor Jarman, councillor Milburn.
I think this, um, provides a very sympathetic view towards the cemetery and it should create quite a, a nice parkland as well.
Thank you. councillor Jarman.
Yeah, I, I suppose I do have one question. Are we still, um, who did the report here? Carol Bright and Matthew. Oh, to Matthew Skirving, perhaps. Um, are we going to get to the point where we may consider putting some kind of small? to the point where we may consider putting some kind of small flower stem holder on each of the columns, um, going forward? Um.
Councillor Jarman, this is basically about the old cemetery.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought this was about both of them. It's only about the old one?
Correct.
Oh, there you go. Well, talk later. Thank you.
Thank you. Were there any other comments or questions?
Yes, mayor, just like councillor Laicock, just like to make a comment that I'm pleased to see we do have this draft master plan out there for the consultation. Um, we've been concentrating a lot on Mersey Vale and that's important, but we mustn't forget our other cemeteries within our municipality. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments or questions? Councillor Milburn? Oh, sorry, councillor Ennis?
Yes, hello. Hit the button. I, I just wanted to say it, it's, it's good that it's going to be actually out there for people, give them, uh, you know, a month to, uh, to have a look and reply to and make comment on. So that's a good thing. It is part of our consultation.
Thank you. Uh, yes, there's already been quite a bit of comment that's, um, I guess, form, helped to form the plan, but, um, give people an opportunity now it's actually in writing. Um, councillor Milburn to close.
Thanks for everyone's, um, discussion there, but consider it closed.
Thank you. I'll put the motion. All those in favour, please say aye.
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 Are there any against? The motion's carried unanimously. Item 5.8 is a report on the Belgravia, um, management of scratch and, um, in relation to COVID-19. Um, there's a recommendation on page 162. Do I have a mover, please?
So moved. Councillor Jarman.
Thank you. Do I have a second, or councillor?
Second, yeah.
Uh, was that councillor Alexio? Was that?
Yes, councillor.
Yes.
Thank you. Councillor Jarman is the mover.
Uh, thank you. Yeah, look, these negotiations are necessary at this time and, um, uh, just terrible when things get closed down, especially something when, um, it's such a healthy thing. So I can't wait to set back up and running again. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Alexio?
Nothing further, chair, madam mayor.
Thank you. Are there any comments or questions?
Yes, mayor, you do.
Councillor Murphy?
Yes, mayor. Um, I'd actually like to, um, pose an amendment to the recommendation or a change to the recommendation if the second or a second are happy. If they read the report, um, and they read the letter from Belgravia in relation to, the recommendation states, note the terms of variation of agreement, point two, um, approve the extension of the current contract by exercising the five-year option contained within the contract through June 2028 and agree to an additional one-year extension of the contract. If they note in the variation of agreement, it actually puts the council in an exposed position with regards to, um, not receiving any profit until all losses, uh, have been recouped by Belgravia. Hypothetically speaking, the, what that means is that the $6,000 that we've now negotiated in relation to, um, the, the weekly or monthly, um, payment instead of $26,000, that $20,000 will still be carried over and will be considered as a loss by them. Though potentially what that does is the forecast $20,000 profit that would have been given to council in the 1920 year or the 2021 year, um, they will then carry that on for a further six years, where council won't receive any financial benefit from Belgravia whatsoever. I think that should actually, the note the terms of the variation agreement and in relation to, uh, it should be capped until 2023, when the new lease agreement or the new five-year contract, um, timeframe starts.
Uh, thank you, councillor Murphy. I might just seek clarification from the general manager. Um, is that, is that the intent, Mr General Manager?
Yeah, through you, mayor. Yeah, just to clarify that, we, I guess, shared that, that concern that councillor Murphy had raised and, uh, went back to Belgravia and actually negotiated that it is capped at the end of 2023. There is a, um, although perhaps it could have been a little bit clearer, in the, um, the report, there is a note there under the variation of profit share arrangement, the heading on, um, page 161.
161, yeah.
Just says there that it's capped, but it's, um, yeah, good idea, put it into the recommendation just to make it clear.
Well, I'm happy to have those changes put in via that. Thank you for bringing it up, councillor Murphy. Um, I had read about it, but I, I agree that maybe we should be a bit clearer in our, um, motion. Um, to change.
Um, I can see on the screen that, um, Ms Sertes has, um, captured that amendment. Councillor Murphy, as the mover of that, are you happy with that?
Yeah, happy there, mayor, thank you.
Okay, as the mover and the second, councillor Jarman, you happy with the changes?
Just reading it fairly clearly, note the terms of the variation, including the waiving of profit share only to the 2023. That's a copy, is it true? What we had there before.
Everything except the bit in red, including the waiving of the profit share only, has been added.
Vary the current profit share arrangement outlined in the schedule of payments. Should we put outlined in the schedule of payments as the only thing? If that's all right. In brackets, outlined in the schedule of payments. So we've got something to go back to. Is that what you'd like, councillor Murphy?
Yeah, happy with that.
Thank you. So, um, as the mover, councillor Jarman, are you happy with that?
I am now.
Councillor Alexio is the second.
Happy with that, madam mayor.
That makes, uh, the changes, I don't need to put to you, as the move and second are happy with that. Are there any other comments or questions? I'll ask councillor Jarman to close the debate, please.
Consider it closed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, ma'am. I was muted and I didn't think I was. I just wanted to make a comment if I could, thanks. Sorry.
Yes, no, that's all right. Yes, councillor Perry?
Um, just to, just to clarification, in the hibernation period dot points, um, Belgravia leisure will invoice council at a rate of $2,162 per week. Yeah, I get that. Council will cease on charging monthly utility costs to Belgravia leisure. Um, does that, does that mean we're inheriting the utility costs until they get back up and running? And if so, that's fine. If so, how much are they? How much, how much do we envisage they might be? I suppose it's a question to the general manager.
General Manager?
Yeah, through you, mayor. It's, um, it's pretty clear what the Aurora costs are. Um, in regard to the gas costs, we're still negotiating with Tas Gas on our contract position on those, but worst case is we're looking at about $3,000, um, per week in total. We, we're hopeful of coming, uh, under that.
$3,000 a week in total, including the $2,162?
That's right, yeah.
Right, yeah. All right. Um, I, I'd also like to congratulate the general manager and his team for negotiating such, well, such a good deal in the circumstances. I mean, we don't, obviously don't want them closed and we don't want to be paying money, we don't have to, but the starting point is around $26,000 and the general manager and his team held their nerve and got it back to $2,162 and I think they deserve credit for that. So well done. And also, well done to councillor Murphy for picking up that point which I had as well, um, and changing the recommendation to reflect it. So well done. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Perry. Um, I think I had asked you to close already, councillor Jarman. Do you have anything else to add?
Oh, no, that's fine. Um, look, they'll be open on the 13th of July, hopefully, and , uh, under restricted, um, measures. So hopefully we can just get it all rolling and getting going. But by the 13th of July, they'll be open. So that's great. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll put the motion. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Are there any against? The motion's carried unanimously. Item 5.9, 9, is Devonport Social Recovery Action Plan, um, which has been developed by our, our, um, community services team. Do I have a mover of the recommendation on page 166, please?
So moved.
Councillor Ennis?
Councillor Murphy.
Oh, sorry, I could hear, but I couldn't say councillor Murphy. Do I have a second?
Councillor Milburn.
Milburn, thank you. Councillor Murphy?
Thank you, mayor. Look, pretty much a necessity in this time. Um, it's a draft Devonport Social Recovery Action Plan. It's a good one. There's been a lot of work put into it, so congratulations to those people involved in that. Um, I think it'd be interesting to see how it goes. Um, I, whether we get the level of participation that we, we envisage that we'd get from this particular plan. Um, we'll wait and see. I think people will be very nervous to start with, but at least we've got something in place.
Thank you, councillor Murphy. Councillor Milburn?
Thanks, mayor. It's great to see that we have something in place to move forward and, um, just congratulations to the team that put this forward. So, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments or questions?
Uh, councillor Ennis?
Councillor Ennis, thank you.
Yeah, I think it's important that we have a plan. Um, plans can always be adjusted. We're in a situation where we're unsure of, uh, you know, how things are going to go. So having something like this is a good start. So well done. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments?
Uh, councillor Perry, madam mayor, I'd just like to comment on that. It's an A-grade team we've got there, so we're in good hands.
Agreed, absolutely. Um, in, any other comments? I'll ask councillor Murphy to close the debate.
Thank you, mayor. Um, yeah, just reiterate, I agree with councillor Perry. Um, a lot of work has gone into this and we, we do have some very, very qualified and skilled people in that area. Consider it closed.
Thank you. I'll put the motion. All those in favour, please say aye.
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 Are there any against? The motion's carried unanimously. Item 6.0 is information and I thought I might seek your indulgence to perhaps move item 6.1, 6.2 and 6.3 as one item, given that they're all information, um, from various people. Um, if that's okay, I would ask a mover for that, please.
So moved.
Councillor Jarman.
Uh, councillor Murphy is the mover, councillor Jarman the second. For items 6.1, 6.2 and 6.3, uh, those reports. Councillor Murphy?
Yeah, look, as you stated, mayor, it's merely procedural. Um, it has probably been very difficult for you to, uh, undertake the normal levels of duties that you do, that you do so well. Um, so there's nothing really further than that.
Thank you. It has been an interesting time. Councillor Jarman?
Yes, well done, mayor. Um, I do have a question through you then for item, uh, 6.3 then, the general manager's report, um, to Mr Atkins. You had a meeting with the developer of the Devonport Showground. Are we going to get an update from you either at a later stage and what's going on there? Would be nice.
Yeah, through you, mayor. Um, yeah, I was contacted by the developer. He's, um, putting together some final, um, documentation with a view of coming to present, he was asked to come and present to council in coming weeks. So as soon as we get him locked in, we'll, um, we'll get him to come and see councillors.
And that's one developer now, not two?
Yeah, he didn't make any comment on the, on, um, it was Simon that I met with.
Yes. All right. Oh, that would be good. It'd be nice to see what, what's happening there. Thank you. Nothing further, mayor.
Thank you. Are there any other comments or questions around those items? In that case, I'll ask councillor Murphy to close.
Consider it closed.
Thank you. I'll put the motion. All those in favour, please say aye.
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 Are there any against? The motion's carried unanimously. And I thought I would seek your indulgence to move item 6.4, 6.5 and 6 as one as well, given that they are all reports from various departments. If anyone's happy to move that?
Happy to move that.
Councillor Jarman? And it's, councillor Perry, thank you. Councillor Jarman?
Um, well, I've, I've just got two questions then, or two comments.
Thank you.
One was page 199, apparently. Uh, uh, through you to the general manager, probably, Matthew. Um, there was some Tas Rail recovering income reimbursement from Tas Rail. Um, so it's page 199 at the bottom, it says April, um, the amount's $32,000. How much did we get from Tas Rail? Was that most of that component? Matthew, you're on mute.
On the bottom of page 199?
Yes.
Yeah, the parking statistics and then down the bottom there, it's, uh, income reimbursement from Tas Rail incident. We all know what the Tas Rail incident was.
Hmm. Look, we'll take that on notice.
All right.
Oh, Mr Skirving's got his hand raised. Mr Skirving.
Through you, mayor. There was some lost, uh, parking revenue due to some, some of the parking bays being out of action for a period of time while the repair works were underway.
Oh, there you go.
Thank you.
So we've just recently invoiced, um, Tas Rail or their insurer for the repair works that were undertaken as well as that, that lost income, which, which isn't, isn't the full $32,000 amount, it's a, it's a component of that.
No worries. I was just interested. Thank you. Um, and look, well done to all the staff working on everything from the arts to everything that's been closed down, all our facilities being closed down. The staff would have just been so lost, but the way that they've coached, done everything was amazing and just, again, a big congratulations on the Diamonds of Devonport, seeing it is mentioned there in 6.6. Um, our, our, um, International Women's Week was great. Maybe there needs to be an International Men's Week. I'm sure that the boys would like that. Um, we do it really well, so maybe the guys, their turn. Um, but the wellness, I just wanted to really mention Wellness Wednesday and what they've been doing on Facebook has been really, um, heartening and I just want to congratulate the staff. You've got to think outside the square when you're in a situation like this and just what they've been doing behind the scenes has just been amazing. So congratulations. Please pass it on. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Perry is the second.
Uh, yeah, that's all been said, nothing, nothing further to add. Good reports, detailed reports and, uh, keep up the good work, everyone.
Thank you. Were there any comments or questions around any of those items?
Yes, mayor. Uh, councillor Ennis?
Councillor Ennis?
I just noticed that people have mentioned, uh, parking and, uh, just perchance, I happened to be down the CBD today and funnily enough, most of the car parking meters were full. So that's great news to see that people are out and about and, uh, supporting our retailers in the CBD.
Thank you. Are there any other comments or questions? Councillor Jarman to close the debate.
Oh, thank you. Consider it closed.
Thank you. I'll put the motion. All those in favour, please say aye.
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 Are there any against? The motion's carried unanimously. Thank you. Item 6.7 is the annual plan progress report to the 30th of April. Do I have a mover, please?
Yes, I'm moved. Councillor Perry?
Thank you. Councillor Perry, do I have a second?
Councillor Milburn?
Thank you. Councillor Perry?
Uh, appears all the, um, all the actions will be achieved on time. There's no issues being identified, so it's all steady as, as it goes till 30 April. Thanks, mayor.
Thank you very much. Councillor Milburn?
All there, thank you, mayor. Nothing further.
Thank you. Are there any comments, questions from any of the other councillors? I will ask councillor Perry to close the debate.
Uh, consider it closed.
Thank you. I'll put the motion. All those in favour, please say aye.
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 Are there any against? The motion's carried unanimously. Item 6.8 is a report on elected members' expenditure for March and April. Do I have a mover, please?
You do, mayor. Councillor. You do, mayor, councillor Lakecock.
Thank you. Do I have a seconder?
Seconder.
Councillor Hollister, I have. Thank you. Councillor Lakecock?
Nothing to add, mayor.
Thank you. Councillor Hollister?
That's all in the report, nothing further.
Thank you. Are there any comments or questions from anyone?
Yes, councillor Ennis?
Councillor Ennis?
I noticed, uh, uh, there's a councillor Ennis in here with one S, um, I'm councillor Ennis with two S's. So maybe that needs to be just slightly amended.
Uh, currently on page where?
Uh, what page is it? Uh, two fifty?
Ah, yes, I see.
Uh, two fifty-four, isn't it?
See it? Yes. It was correct on the next page, so I was confused. Thank you. Thank you. Are there any other comments?
Yeah, mayor, I just.
Councillor Murphy, yes?
Uh, actually just looking at that where councillor Ennis with one S. Councillor Alexio and councillor Hollister look to have attended the same thing. They just seem, is there the, the travel for professional development? Was there something else in relation for that, was there? From councillor, I thought if they all went to the same thing, it all would have been the same. Just that discrepancy, is there a reason for that?
Can we take that on notice? I'll ask councillor.
Uh, I, I can make the comment if, if you like. Uh, that's, uh, travel expenses. I claimed it.
Thank you.
Yep, okay, thanks.
Thank you. Okay, uh, are there any other comments or questions? I will ask councillor Lake, sorry. Councillor Alexio, was that you?
Sorry, madam, yeah. Just on that point, um, I must have missed the travel, to my travel there, is that correct?
Uh, that's something you'd probably need to take up with the general manager.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Councillor Lakecock to close.
Consider it closed, mayor.
Thank you. I'll put the motion. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Are there any against? Are there any against? The motion's carried unanimously. Item six point nine is the financial report for the year ended April twenty twenty. Do I have a mover, please?
So I move councillor Murphy.
Thank you councillor Murphy. Do I have a seconder?
Seconder.
Councillor Alexio, thank you. Councillor Murphy?
Yeah, look, it's merely procedural, mayor. There is some, um, some variances there in relation to, um, where things will be recognised in relation to our, um, value of swaps recognised near end. And obviously some others there that, uh, we might be able to recover some of those internal charges. But anyway, other than that, it's going to be interesting to see what it looks like at the end of the financial year.
Yes, it is. The one with everybody else's financial report. Councillor Murphy. Councillor Alexio?
Nothing further to add, madam chair.
Thank you. Are there any comments or questions around the financial report?
No, mayor.
Councillor Lakecock?
Sorry, no. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll ask councillor Murphy to close the debate. Thank you. Councillor Murphy, can you close, please?
I couldn't get my mute button to work now. I was trying vigorously. Consider it closed.
Thank you. I'll put the motion. All those in favour, please say aye.
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 Are there any against? Thank you. The motion's carried unanimously. That being, um, seven point zero, uh, section twenty-three committee reports, there are none. We're moving on to eight point zero is moving into closed session. Do I have a mover, please? Six thirty-seven.
So I move.
Councillor Milburn, councillor Hollister, any comments?
No comments, ma'am.
Thank you. Councillor Hollister?
Nothing to add.
I will put the motion. All those in favour, please say aye.
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 Are there any against? The motion's carried unanimously. Um, Mr Griffiths, do I need to give a moment to make sure that we are in closed session?